And can you all, can you all hear me okay too?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, welcome everybody. It's the, I think this is the first one this year, right? The new Geospatial Professional Network Town Hall. We started this a few years ago during COVID, trying to get more inspiration. We've done other town halls as we've done some of the candidates that we've had also. But it's something that we want to use to engage with the community. And you know, this is a perfect time because we just had a recent meeting, a board meeting. We did the planning meeting for the conference, so really excited to be here. Really excited to do this town hall again. And also have an opportunity for you all to answer any questions. You know, if we had anything that is on your mind or what are the things that we want to address as we're moving forward? And getting towards the annual conference because I'm again, really excited about that because it's in my hometown. So, next slide please. And unfortunately, the computer that I have, the Mac, doesn't they, even though I am the IT director, I don't have access to admin side of the ability to do this. So I have to call my help desk to get it working. So quickly, the agenda, introduction, rebrand where we are now. Our strategy, training and educational opportunities, opportunities to get involved. So we really want to talk a little bit about how, if you're a member and you're not involved in certain activities, how to get involved. And then talk a little bit about how we're supporting the geospatial professional. And also look at the salary survey and hopefully we'll have some time to do some question and answer at the end of this as well. But I just wanted to kind of go through this. So real quick introduction, I'm John Nolte. I am the president, the current president of the Geospatial Professional Network. And it's, we have a really fantastic board this year. We have been really trying to meet and talk about the issues and talk about how we support the profession and, and build out a strategy. That's kind of our effort this. We did the rebrand last year, as you know. And we're really focused on kind of building out that strategy. The executive committee, it's myself, Wendy Palakwin, who's also online, Tom Fisher, Jamie Dennis and Matt Gericky. We also have the board of directors, so Sarah Aiken, Christina Brunswick, Josiah Burkett, Adam Carnell, Clinton Johnson, Eve Legere and Sid Panney. So we have a really strong board. And we've done some fantastic work this year, so really happy about everything as we're moving forward too. Next slide please. So, and I know most of you have probably already seen the, obviously the rebrand as we've gone through. We were previously Erisa when we started this process, we looked at what we were going to do, maybe do a tagline, maybe do a full rebrand. We settled on this rebrand and, and if you notice, we actually, I did this little slide, put the slide together. This is a downtown 3D representation of Denver, but we, in the right hand corner, we actually are using the new branding. So that Geospatial Professional Network, we even have the, the reverse color image, so they put it on the background. So we've been working on that branding effort and the branding guide and everything too. And so one of the first things we did was the value proposition. I know many of you have seen this already. We've seen, we presented this at the annual conference last year, but this is something that we worked on and have kind of perfected over the last year. And this is also, and the reason I'm putting this up here is that this is also one of the things that we looked at when we were building out the strategy. So we took the value proposition and we built out the goals and the strategy around that for our next strategic plan. And so looking at the value proposition, the Geospatial Professional Network is a vibrant community uniting emerging and experienced GIS professionals through top tier education, networking, career development. We are committed to upholding ethical standards, empowering you to support your organization, advance your career and shape the future of the geospatial profession. And we took that and we really started how we can build that into the strategy. And as I go forward in some of these slides, we'll talk a little bit more about that too and, and kind of get into some of the strategy that we're, we're building out. And this is just the beginning of that. And we're looking at how this value proposition, basically taking this information and really living to those standards and building out those goals and strategies and everything that we want to, to build into the next generation of this geospatial professional network. So taking it from what we did with Erisa to the geospatial professional network and, and lasting another 60 plus years or longer. And we've, we've been in, have a really longstanding history and we're building it out even further. And that's kind of what we're focused on. We also know that the, the profession is changing and we've seen a lot of that. And we've seen a lot of that in the, the workers that have been affected by some of the issues that the federal government's been doing, as well as some of the other things that have been going on. And then also looking at a lot of the other aspects of the, the profession and how it's changing with the technology and all that stuff. And so we felt that that was really important. And so I'm not going to reiterate all the things that we went through, but I'm really proud of the brand that we came up with and how we can move forward with this too. And here's again, that logo that we came up with. The other thing too is we're looking at, and we know, we understand that the chapters are also a huge portion of our organization. We really want to make sure that we focus on how we can support all members of the organization and how we are able to do that. And one of the big things is that chapters and committees. And so that rebranding process, we understand there's a lot of work that's involved, but we use our consultants to our marketing folks to actually build out these logos. And you can see there's slight differences between the logos and, but we're still having that unified one message, one logo that we can represent and have it as our standard for moving forward. And really focusing on not only that rebrand, but the, the ability to lead with the organization and have it as one really kind of seamless integration of the, of a brand throughout all of the things that we do. And so we've come up with that branding guide and that branding guide is on our website. You can see it, I believe it's on our website. But if we're still working with some of the logos with the chapters and the committees, and we're also doing all the letterhead and everything else too. So it's, it's kind of a nice little thing that we're not trying to push the design and efforts out to some of the other folks, but we want to have that unified messaging and unified branding across the, the entire organization. Next slide please. One of the things that we did as a rebrand too is, is trying to address the, the, again, the profession, the geospatial. What makes us our competitive advantage? What is our really sustainable ideas of how we build this future into this organization? And something that we came up with, we have, you know, already have the chapters and the committees involved, but something we came up with communities. And I did a, you know, of course, like all technology, I did some of the chat GPT in this and, and came up with the, this is really kind of that idea. And then I used some of the language that we had from our website as well. And so what is a geospatial community? And this was a concept that developed over the last year, well, two years that we came up with. And we introduced it at the annual conference, but we really want to start focusing on some of these things. And so the idea is it's a dynamic ecosystem of individuals and organizations to share professional, academic and personal interests and geographic information, spatial technologies and location based problem solving. And it's really kind of cool to think about this as a chat GPT thing, but that's really what we're, what we want to do. We want to bring together that network of individuals that have, that share some common thought process or common technology. We know geospatial GIS, all these things that we do, data analytics, all these really cool applications that we run fit into this category. And so we want to, and then it can be, a community can be anything really. We have several pilot communities, but we wanted to really focus on whatever is that network that you can build out and have that developed into something that you share knowledge, you share that thought process, you share the information behind it. You even share some of the educational aspects of it. And so if it's something that's more on the academic side or something on the professional side, you have that training and you have those capabilities of doing that. And that's all done through our connect platform too. And so all that stuff is right built into it and we want to have that engagement and have the ability to share that knowledge because that's what makes us strong. It's the network that makes us strong. And so this is a, the bottom three bullet points are people first, mission driven network built around spatial thinking. A powerful catalyst for learning, career growth and real world impact. Or, you know, the one that I put in here is just a way for like-minded individuals from geospatial community gather around common interests. So if you go to the next slide, the, some of the communities that we have, that we have three pilot communities, the emergent professionals, the small and local government and the utilities. And we also have the GPN book club, which I know Tim is a big fan of, although the latest book, the one, the Thinking Fast and Slow, that's a little bit of hard read. I just got to.
We abandoned it. So now we're doing Making Your Own Bed. So it's like a super quick read. It's like 97 pages. So.
Yeah, there you go. It's.
And Friday is our book club.
Yeah, Thinking Fast and Slow is, is a fabulous book if you get to a chance to read it, but man, it's dense. It's a, it's a tough one to get through. But again, these are the communities that we've developed and we're starting to work out and, you know, having this. And I just actually, and my fault completely because I've been so busy, but I just got back on the utilities community just the other day and I saw a message from a gentleman that was looking to go his first user conference. And this is a perfect example of that, building that network. He, he was asking about what presentations they should focus on at the utility, at the UC, the Ezra UC. And it's a perfect example of, if you ever, I know many of you have gone, but if it's your first time, it's overwhelming. I mean, there's eight, if it's 12, 13,000 people or more that are focused on different areas. And you know, I always laugh because on the utility side, you're always on that south end of the convention center. And you kind of gravitate the, but it's hard to know which ones are good presentations. And so having that question being asked and having the ability of the community and the network to be able to answer that question is super important. We have that engagement. We have that, you know, hey, if there, if you're going, I'm not going this year, but hey, if you're going and they've been before, maybe they can meet and talk about these different things. And that's kind of what we're hoping to do with these communities. And it can be anything. If there's certain things will, the book club is good, another good example. But if there's other areas of community resiliency, you know, our, our other areas that we want to focus on that have that type of common networking and the ability to be able to share resources. It's really kind of an incredible idea that we, we've, and there's a lot of different ideas for this too. So next slide please. So we'll go a little bit into our strategy. And at this point, these are all the strategic goals that we've had from the past. We just refreshed it. And so we didn't really look at it because we feel that these still capture that strategy that we want to have as an organization. And the, the top three that we have are sustain and strengthen the GPN. The next one is promote, protect and grow the profession. And then support geospatial professionals at all stages of their careers with education resources and opportunities to contribute. So if you go back to that value proposition and you start looking at what we did, it really isn't that much different than what we have as our strategic goals. And so that all kind of facilitated out of that conversation where we had, and we basically built out this strategy. And then the value proposition just came pretty naturally to that because of the organization, the mission of the organization hasn't changed. Even though we may be rebranding and doing all these other things, the mission of the organization hasn't changed. And that's what we wanted to focus on. And so I will go into a little bit of these, the strategies around these. And the first one, the sustain and strengthen the GPN, to ensure volunteer financial technology and staff resources are able to support the GPN. And what does that mean? We want to make sure that the committees have all the resources that they need to be successful. We want to make sure that the organization has the financial means to, to continue through our different programs. And so we're constantly coming up with educational opportunities. We're constantly coming up with things that we can do to promote that. And then looking at, you know, how we can build out in the chapters and how we can build out the business network and different things that we offer. And so is it that we build out the tech stack a little bit better? So we have one unified ArcGIS online platform where we look at connect and that was one of those things. Or even the LMS, our learning management system, which I'll talk a little bit about as we go forward. But all those things factored into that first goal. The second goal is promote, protect and grow the profession. And these are ones that we just came up with, you know, or modified from the last one is monitor and foreign policies and threats related to the profession and society at large. And that's done through one of our committees, the, the policy advisory committee, which basically looks at those things. It's also done through a lot of the network and the organization as a whole. And so looking at where the, our issues might be, whether it's DEI or ethics or things like that. We start looking at all those different issues that we might be, laws that are being passed or, or areas that we start to, to focus on. And how we can be a better network for those folks. And that's really something that we, we've been building out. And we have really strong network in there. The other one, facilitate professional conferences and events. Of course, we have many, many events and I will go through some of those as we go forward, but also our GIS Pro Conference coming up in, in Denver again. But all these things are part of that promote, protect and grow the profession. And then provide resources that's support professional certification. So looking at what other ways we can support, whether that's workshops before the GIS Pro, whether that's workshops throughout the year, whether that's points that you can get through that certification. So we're looking at all those different things and then contribute to the development, maintenance and sharing of best practices. And so what does that mean when we're looking at all of those things? And part of that is to look at, you know, how we share information, how we share data, how we share these things. What's the training for this type of work that we're doing and building that out? And then another one, promote a welcoming and vibrant culture and environment. And we want people to feel welcome and build out that network and be able to communicate. I use the network probably on a daily basis where I reach out to folks that, that in the utilities industry that I know. If there's something that I need some advice on or something that I can utilize. I have those network of people and we want to build out that for everybody. We want to have that so that you can reach out to any one of us and be able to do that. And then the last one on this one is foster strategic relationships and partnerships with other organizations and industry. And we've started that process with a lot of new, we've seen a lot of growth in some of these other organizations and we're partnering with them. And we're making sure that we stay strategically aligned so that we can really focus on the profession as it, as a whole, instead of just, you know, what our mission is, which our mission is to, to promote, protect and grow the profession. So looking at all those strategic alliances and partnerships and with the industry, with vendors, with people that support the profession as well as other organizations. And so that's kind of another area that we're really expanding on at this point. And then the last one is support geospatial professionals at all stages of their careers with education, resource and opportunities to contribute. And this is a really kind of an area that we're, we're expanding upon, like all the other ones too. The support of emerging professionals and students and looking at how we can really grow with that. And so our mentor program with the Vanguard Cabinet, some of the other programs that we have with scholarships. And, and there's areas that, you know, you can focus on to, you can get a scholarship to the GIS Pro Conference and really build out that network for students. And we have student membership. And that's one of the struggles that we know we have is that areas in the universities that many of us, and it was part of the issue with why we wanted to rebrand. Many of the people didn't understand what that Erisa stood for, what it was, and then didn't identify with that. And so that's one of those areas that we really wanted to focus on with the geospatial professional network. We felt that this is a good way for people to identify and students to get involved. And so we're reaching out to a lot of the university. There's a lot of academics and working with them. And I know I'm on the board of directors for a couple of different organizations and looking at different curriculum. We even trying to figure out if it makes sense to come into the profession with some of the curriculum that's being taught now and looking at data science and looking at ways we can probably go into the future for those things. And so we're looking at all that too. And then develop, deliver professional education. Our, our PEC committee is one of those areas that we start looking at how we can build out those workshops. We also have the GIS Leadership Academy. And, and that's something that we really kind of excel at is looking at that management and leadership side of things. And so we're building out a lot of that professional education. And then we're also looking at other workshops. So we look at what we're offering now and how do we get to that next level? You know, everybody's talking about GOAI and what does that mean? And start looking at those things. And then the coordinate system changes that we're doing. And so we're building out resources and education that can, people can utilize to, to start focusing on some of these newer technologies or even the shift to the new coordinate systems. And well, that's always something that we're constantly looking at it. And then the support, leadership, development and mentorship. And that goes back to a lot of the things that I've already stated with that mentor program, mentorship program and the leadership development. We've, we launched the advanced GIS Leadership Academy last year and this year we have it again. And I will talk a little bit more about that as we go forward too. But these are all different things that we're doing to kind of build out on that strategy. And then we provide opportunities for volunteering, give them back to the profession and society. And that's really a pivotal point that I want to make here is that there are opportunities for you to get involved. And we want to make sure that we're doing that. And we're building out a platform for you to get to that point so that we have some mentorship. If you want to volunteer and you don't know where to start, we're looking at ways that we can get you involved. And you know, of course it's reaching out or having that previously it was building into that network. But we're hoping that we can build out into that learning management system, the current one that we're launching to be able to actually have that knowledge that you need to be, to join and volunteer and look at the different committees that are being presented to. Okay. And that brings me to the training and education opportunities. And so we have a bunch of different upcoming webinars, which are really, I'm very excited about the one that's coming up, the Geospatial Trends and Observations from Higher Education. And that's in June, on June 30th too. You could get all this information from the GPN Connect site and, and our website. So you could go to the website and register for these. And these are free webinars. These are really some great ones that we've had. And we've had a lot of people join these. And so we're really trying to build out these, that community and that network by doing these things and using these ways to build out the education and the training opportunities. The other one that we have coming up is unlock your data's impact. So looking at a lot of really cool ideas and this one's coming up soon, so June 9th. So register for this. Also, there's, this is a great opportunity for folks that have knowledge in different areas to host a webinar. And we have that platform to do so. So if you're interested in hosting a webinar, you can reach out to us and get involved and, and we'd be happy to host a lot of different things. And then we've had a lot of different groups that have been presenting on these leadership, management, data, education, these different topics that are really important to us, important to the profession. Then we also, in the last year, released this, the learning management system. So we have the GPN Learning Annex. And this is, if you have a chance to get on the website, you can actually get out there and look at all the offerings that we have. And we're, we're going to be offering a lot more for this. This is also where you can get some of the resources for some of the webinars that we have and some of the different areas that we have information about. And so there, there's a lot of good resources on this and we're going to be offering more and more. And so this is a really cool idea. And one of the things that you, it's really focused on, and this is kind of the future. We've seen this with a lot of the other sites that have done a lot of different educational opportunities for online learning. And we've, we've, we're working on this as we've seen a lot of this is, is people want to learn on the, on their own schedule. And then it's also a great way to earn certificates and completion for your GISP. So again, going back to that value proposition, going back to the strategy, it's really kind of focused on a lot of that where we have the promoting the certification, the GISP certification and being able to give you resources to develop that for you. The, some of the other webinars that we have or workshops that we were moving over, we have the professional development series, which I, I've attended a bunch of those and we've been really building out those. So next one that coming up, or one of the ones we have is building capacity through professional development. And that's a really kind of an interesting one. Then you can see on the right hand side that there's a few others that we have, that we have access to. But also we're looking at working on getting those workshops, the GIS and the 911 workflow and the GIS exam prep, GISP exam prep. We are wanting to be able to have you look at that and take that class because it's, it's difficult when you have a few instructors that are able to teach it and you have to go through that scenario. And we want to make sure that you have the resources you, you need to pass the exam. And so we are in the middle of developing that so that you can have that before you take the exam. And so in the weeks prior to taking an exam, because that's where you're going to get the most benefit from it. A lot of the other professional development organizations that have these types of tests and like the PI, the PMP exams and all those things. It's always best to take it, take the exam prep right before you take the test because it gets you in that mode of, of learning and understanding and then being able to apply that knowledge to the exam. And so we're really excited about offering that too. And then there's a whole bunch of more. The other opportunities we have, and this is coming up very quickly too. So if you haven't been able to register and you're still interested, June 16th through the 20th in Chicago, we have the GIS Leadership Academy. And again, that's going to be another fabulous course. I've been, I'm kind of biased because I've been teaching it for a while and I've already, I've taken it and I love the instructors. Everybody's does a great job. And it's really kind of, you know, somebody quoted and said it's, it's a mini MBA program. And I almost would say that is because I, you know, I just got my MBA a couple of years back. And I find a lot of the similarities in the days that we have, you know, obviously it's condensed, but in the same things that they're teaching over those courses of a three-year program, you learn a lot of those aspects in those days. And it's a lot of information, a lot of material, but it's taught in a way that's fabulous and, and really kind of gets you on that. And you don't have to be a GIS manager or leader to do that. We all can, you can lead from any different areas in your organization. And I always encourage everybody to take the course because it really expands upon that leadership knowledge. And get, and it goes through the difference between management, leadership and ROI and all these different ideas. And then we also have the Advanced GIS Leadership Academy. So one of the things that we looked at when we were building this out was how do we develop a program for those that have already graduated? Because we actually had a few people that would take the GIS Leadership Academy over again to get that same knowledge. And we started looking at, thinking maybe we could teach more in depth in some of these areas, teaching more about the ROI and the, the other parts of those areas that want, you want, people want to get to that next level. And so we also have the Advanced GIS Leadership Academy. And that's in New Orleans this year, which you know, is such a fabulous place. And November 3rd through the 7th. And that is probably one of the best times to go too, because the, the weather in a lot of our other areas, of course, in Denver, it's probably pretty cold at that point. I mean, I think we had a December GIS Leadership Academy in, in Denver in December. And it snowed on one of the days. So this is a great program and a great city. And if you've already taken the GIS Leadership Academy, this would be another great opportunity for you to get involved in this. And then of course, our last GIS Leadership Academy this year, taught in person, is going to be in Savannah, Georgia from December 8th through the 12th. Another time, a great time to be in a, in a perfect, great city and learning some incredible stuff too. So I'm excited about this one too. And of course, the GIS Pro in the Rockies. And this was one of those ones that was several years in the making. And if you're, if you've ever been to GIS in the Rockies, it's another incredible. It's an incredible conference that we have in Denver that we've had for years. And actually started out years ago as a, as a Erisa conference. And, and so GIS in the Rockies, we had the opportunity to partner with them. And so we have them as part of our conference committee and planning committee and building out this relationship between, again, as we go back into supporting those other organizations. This is a perfect opportunity for us to get involved in the organization that's here and, and Just Go and GIS in the Rockies and all these different groups that are part of this community. And it's a fabulous community here in Denver. But building out these, and I, we've just had the planning meeting just a couple of weeks ago and went through the abstracts. And, and it's some of the best I've seen. And I'm really, really excited about it. And their technology and management and leadership and merging professionals. And we have such a fabulous opportunity for everybody to get involved and, and come out to Denver. And the weather at that time is going to be perfect. I really can, October is probably one of my. I really, uh, can, October is probably one of my favorite months in Denver. Um, of course it can get snowy at times, but I, it's usually, usually perfect weather. And, uh, we're right downtown and downtown has been, um, kind of revitalizing since COVID. So we've been seeing a lot of new, uh, restaurants and, and places that have been going in. So I'm really, again, really excited about it because it's my hometown. And there's a lot of ways to get involved, um, and there's, we have a lot of volunteer resources. So the GPN Connect is perfect way, and I'll talk a little bit about that as we go further too. And then we have the ArcGIS Online, um, and then our committees. And so, um, there's a lot of different ways to volunteer and get involved. Um, our ArcGIS Online is, is, uh, our tech that we're doing, and we're building out a lot more of the chapters in that. And so we, we're building out a lot of the tech behind that too. And I've seen, I see Tim saying that the, the book, book club meets tomorrow. So you're not reading, thinking fast and slow, although I do recommend if you have a chance, it'll probably take you a year to read though. Next slide please. So here are some of the committees, um, and these are all the different ones. I'm not gonna read out everyone's, but there's, there's a lot of different ways of, um, building out these, uh, building, uh, volunteering. And so, um, from the, um, you know, a lot of the chapters, uh, are involved in the chapters, development and relations council. But we also have the climate, uh, and committee, resi- community resilience. Then we have the, the LEAF, the location enterprise addressing, public safety, marketing, membership, uh, policy advisory, which, uh, Sid will be talking a little bit about that too. Um, we also have the pro equity and anti racism, the pair committee, uh, which is really kind of focused on how we can, bring the community together on all different aspects of that. So of pro equity, uh, DEI, all these different things that we're looking at, uh, making sure that we're involving everybody and kind of seeing where we build that community, that vibrant community around the geospatial profession, because we know that that's such an important aspect of it. And then of course, the Vanguard, the professional education and the Vanguard Cabinet are also really, really, um, important areas. The Vanguard is our emerging professionals, our, our, um, folks that are, that, uh, are part of the building out the mentor program and mentorship. And so those folks that are new to the profession that are coming in through, uh, universities and things like that, they, um, might be in the, for our early stages of their career. They're learning about how to navigate some of the organization's issues and culture and things like that as you're building out, um, your resume and things like that. We, they also have scholarships and other programs. And they're really focused on building out that community for those emerging professionals too. And the, the LDC is, is, uh, this is like also a really good way of, um, building out your volunteer effort. And so what we have is we use the LDC, so our leadership development is looking at, uh, the new board members. And so everybody that is involved in the organization, uh, that wants to continue to be involved, that the LDC is looking at who is going to be, um, the, building out that candidate slate, which we all see as we should be coming up soon. And part of that is also looking at the, um, candidates, the town hall, uh, that we will be having soon. So meet the candidates, um, the LDC is putting all that together. Uh, and as I said, the young professionals, this is another way to get involved, uh, is so, if you want to, and I mentioned this before, and that QR code that I put on there is, is set to actually go to the website to apply for this. And so you only have a few days left to apply, but if you want to go to that, uh, the GIS Pro, um, you can, uh, scan that QR code and be able to, uh, possibly earn a scholarship to attend the, the conference. Um, and that closes on, on June 2nd. The next one, the mentoring network applications, we have the next cohort that's opening up, and it closes on June 15th. And if you want to, if you're, if you meet the criteria for the Vanguard, again, another incredible way to get involved in the organization and, and a really great committee. Um, you can apply to the Vanguard Cabinet and their, uh, applications are accepted until June, uh, July 25th. So again, if you're interested, uh, reach out to any of us, go to the website, be able to, uh, get that information. We're happy to answer those questions. I also want to talk a little bit about the chapters too. So if you're a member of the GPN and you're in an area that has a chapter, um, you are automatically a member of that chapter as well. And so one of those things that we want to focus on, and we're really trying to build out that relationship, is how do we, how do we relay that information down to the chapters? A lot of people get involved in the chapters first, and then they get involved in the organization. And sometimes they get involved in the organization first and then get involved in the chapters. And the chapters are doing such great work. And they're really on that community of those areas that you're looking at, um, with, you know, involvement. We do, in the Rocky Mountain chapter, we, we host, uh, Mappy Hours, we do Career Night, um, we have scholarships as well. And so really trying to build out that community for the area that we represent and having that, um, a net, another networking opportunity. And there's a lot more that do that same type of things. Uh, we've been heavily involved in the, in the past in the GIS in the Rockies as well. Uh, and a lot of other chapters have been involved in their communities with conferences and other educational opportunities. We also help host webinars and workshops and things like that. So again, a lot of great ways to get involved. There are also international chapters too. And so we have, uh, three currently, and we, of course, through the Erisa Alberta, we have to update that, uh, new, uh, to the new, um, branding, and then the B-Spatial. Uh, but we also have the Caribbean chapter. So, uh, I know we, we used to have the Caribbean, um, conference, but, uh, we need to get back down there so we can send the board back down so we can all go, um, and have a great conference. That's where GIS Pro should be in the next year or so, right? Uh, uh, we'd all love to go to the Caribbean. Um, another area too is if your organization, and we, this is part of the rebrand too. If your organization is part of, uh, you know, building out a system or building out a, a single process, either an enterprise or single process system, we want you to submit your application for the E-CIG awards. So the exemplary systems and geospatial awards. And to have that, um, when we rebranded, we rebranded from government to geospatial. So any of the organizations that have these types of systems can apply. And again, your deadline is June 2nd, but we want to expand that out to have, um, all people that are involved in this, all the communities that are involved in this, that can, that have these types of systems can be part of this, the E-CIG awards. And, um, we have a committee that goes through that and, and looks at all the different processes. And the last few years, we've had some incredible work that's been done. And you get an opportunity to, um, present as well, um, your, your systems at the conference. And we, there's always good videos that you can see of those systems. And so it's a great way to, to get back to the profession as well. Um, and I, at this point, I will turn it over to Sid, and he's, um, gonna talk a little bit about the policy advisory committee.
Thanks, Sean. Uh, sound check, you can hear me okay?
Yep.
Awesome. Hey, everyone. Uh, good to see so many people on the call. Um, I just wanted to give a quick, uh, highlight on the policy advisory committee. Um, you heard a little bit about it earlier. Um, I, I really kind of see it as like the, the committee guardians for the, uh, the organization, but also the industry at large. Uh, so we have, uh, you know, a bunch of folks on the team who care deeply about, uh, the geospatial industry, different, uh, policies or legislations that are coming out. You know, they're constantly, you know, scouring the web, uh, and other sources for anything that may impact, uh, either positively or negatively, um, our way of doing work, our profession, um, or our organization. And they provide recommendations to the board on how we should react, uh, or support, uh, some of these changes. Um, so they, they go through a lot of effort to, to find all this information, do some pretty thorough analysis. We have some good discussions on, on, um, you know, what these really mean for all of us. Uh, and like I said, provide those recommendations back to the board, um, where we can then, uh, take, take some action. I just wanted to highlight a couple of current needs. Um, so I know this doesn't come as a surprise to anyone, but obviously a lot of things are changing in the federal landscape. Um, a lot of things are changing with the data that we have access to, the programs that produce them, the workforce that supports them. Uh, and so we are looking very closely at, uh, all of those changes and how we as an organization can best support, uh, the, the folks that are being impacted, uh, directly in the workforce, um, the data sets and programs themselves, and then of course the users of all of that great information. Uh, and so if that is something that you are interested in or passionate about, um, or just, you know, want to learn more about, uh, please check out our, our meetings, um, and you can reach out to me for more information about that. We're looking for more, uh, help to kind of keep an eye on, you know, what those changes are because things are rapidly changing, um, and to provide that, uh, input or insight on, you know, what it means, what are good ways in which we can be supportive, um, and, uh, you know, anything else that we can do, uh, to, you know, continue to support and protect our, our industry and the profession. And just, you know, how to be better advocates. So if that's something you're interested in, let me know. We, we really could use some more help. And, and also I think we have a great opportunity right now to help educate people as well. I think that, you know, many of us are, you know, familiar with what's going on and how these things could impact us. Uh, but there are likely a lot of others out there, uh, that aren't. Um, and so we're trying to find ways to get the word out to our, our membership as well. And, uh, so if you've got creative thoughts or ideas and, and, you know, want to help amplify the message, uh, we welcome you to the, to the group. So feel free to reach out if you're interested. Thanks, Sean. I'll pass it back to you now.
Yeah, thank you, Sid. Yeah, and again, that, that, some of the things that, you know, looking at like that continued support to the geospatial professional, the, here's like, what Sid was just talking about, our support for workforce, the data resources, the career resources. And so, um, if, I, I've always loved the, the fact that the networking, I've, I've actually helped personally a few people, um, connect with people to get, uh, employment. And those are really good ways of doing that. The mentor program is a really good way, um, to get involved. And kind of that whole thing, we know that people are struggling. We know that people are, are really trying to figure out what the, what to do or what, how to share resources and how to build out these, at these programs. And we want to be able to help in whatever way possible. And there's always ways, especially with that networking aspect of it, how we can connect with other people and connect with different groups and connect with that, the organizations that we know in these areas. Um, and so we, we are such a great resource for be able to do that. And that brings me to, uh, some of the ways that you can actually get involved, uh, in our, uh, networking opportunities. And this, we launched this a few years ago, our GPN Connect. And we, um, you know, highlight these things and, and, uh, not to call anybody out on here because I didn't, I probably should have blanked out names, but I figured it was okay because it was on the front page anyway. But this is a way that if you, a lot of people come in, they introduce themselves, they get a lot of responses. And it's, it's a great way to, uh, show the support of the new people that are coming in, the, the folks that are involved in, in the organization, also ways to grow, asking questions. I mean, I used this when I was looking at, um, getting my MBA, and I posed the question to the group to say, would it be better to go for my public, um, the, uh, different, um, I can't even think of it now, but, but, uh, basically just looking at different, uh, uh, programs or go into a GIS program, a GIS master's program, or go for my MBA. And I got all these responses and kind of settled in on the MBA. And so it was a great way of looking at, um, different resources and having experienced people that have experience in different areas and seeing what focus is. And so we have new member introductions, we have public announcements. So if there's something that's, uh, that, um, and you know, of course Wendy is fabulous resource for posting these things. But, um, Wendy has this post at the top of, who's presenting at the Ezra UC? So simple way of thing, uh, putting on there and people respond and they'll get all these responses. And then you can show your support for those people. And you can meet the new people that are in the organization that are presenting and, and show your support in that way too. And the other thing too is, is how you're contributing. So, um, it's kind of a little bit of a contest and, uh, we, I know Joe Zaya was talking about it, we, we haven't finalized it yet, but we're looking at maybe some way of, uh, rewarding people on their contributions. And so, um, you know, of course, being board members and things like that, I get a lot more of the contributions for that. But I also like to actually reach out to people and, and talk with them and give them, you know, um, some resources and networking opportunities. And so that's kind of a fun way. If you look on your, on the right, there's your contribution. So the leading contributors are the top 1%, um, and I'm number seven out of the, the, the 1,900 people that have been involved. But a lot of the, again, is that because I post a lot for the board, uh, and, and other information around that. But it's such a, a kind of a fun way to do that. And then lastly, before we, uh, get some questions, hopefully we'll have some time, question answers, is part of the thing that we look at too is that workforce development and where we need to be. And so we look at that salary survey, and we've done this for years. And it's one of those areas that we can use to, um, advocate for salaries. And, and there's such a discrepancy, we've had these conversations when I've been on workforce development, um, committees and talking about these things. And there's such a, uh, way, a discrepancy between like IT and GIS and other things. And so we take a salary survey of all the, all the people. It went out to 4,600 individuals, uh, actually went out to more, but 4,600 individuals participated. And there's a ton of information in this, and you can really use this for the organization, use this for advocacy in that we're also looking at, on top of this, uh, a job classification book. So looking at those job descriptions and unifying all those, because we want to make sure that we're, as part of our strategy, um, we're advocating for the professional and advocating for our career growth and our, our, um, ability to have that data behind this, because we are all part of that data. So we can go to our management or other organizations can look at this and then utilize this information. And so we put this together, and we've done it for years, um, where we put this together. And it's an offer $175 for members and 350 for non-members. And it's a fabulous resource that you can use, and it has a lot of information in it. And so, uh, you, you can use that URL at the bottom to, um, to get to that link. And I believe that's it. And I, I just want to, uh, take some time, and if you have any questions for the board of the organization, if you want to, you can submit them now, um, or if you want, you can always reach out to us, uh, at some point and ask those questions. But I appreciate everybody that has joined and, uh, I'm looking forward to another fabulous, uh, rest of the year and another great conference too. So thank you. Do we have any questions?
Just have a few announcements, I've put them in the chat, but, uh, again, book club is tomorrow. Uh, you don't have to read the book, just join us for the conversation. Uh, but it is a smaller book this time, so, uh, as Matt says, it's a two-hour, uh, audiobook if, uh, you squeeze it in. And we have a membership, uh, a GPN membership meetup on Tuesday. And we, we thought we'd try a little something different this time. It's just you bring a problem and we, the collective, will solve it for you. So, uh, so let's just, uh, you know, bring your, your sticky problems and we'll see if we can, uh, we can help you out. But, uh, that'll be on Tuesday.
Thanks, Tim. That sounds like a great time.
Yeah.
And will you wrap the answer though? That's what I would like to know.
So you saw that, huh? Okay. Maybe, we'll see. Show up and we'll find out.
I think I missed that.
You gotta see the post.
Any other questions or comments or things we should be focused on?
Kind of, just one, one more announcement. Uh, I, I'm part of a group, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm the membership chair. And we are looking at the, the LMS system that you described. Uh, the first two things that we're, we're adding, well, there's tons of content out there already. But one of the things we're creating now is, um, how to use, you know, the things you described today, like how to, how to engage with connect. What's, what are some, you know, ways that we can, uh, uh, collaborate with each other? And also how to be a, you know, a, you know, be, get involved more in, if that's your desire, you know, how do you join a committee? How do you, uh, you know, how do you share some of your information that you want to share? How do you do, you know, you know, advance your, advance your career in that way? advance your, advance your career in that way? So we've had, kind of have a working group now to kind of build some of those things out. So, and we're open for any ideas. We thought we'd just start with a few to see how the platform works and then we can, we can continue to add that way.
Yeah, I'm excited about that resource. It's going to be great. Well, again, thank you, everybody that joined. I'm happy to answer any questions as part of the organization. And there's a lot of the members of the board on here as well. So reach out to any of us if you have any questions and comments or need some ideas or if you want to meet up at the conference, if you're coming, we'll start posting those things too. We have some really good social activities and some opportunities to network and lots of fun, fun ideas.
Actually, John, speaking of that, you know, a lot of us typically attend the Ezra User Conference in July as well. So if, if you're there, if you're presenting, doing anything cool, feel free to share that in the Connect platform as well. Always love to support the community and come cheer you on while you're presenting.
Wendy, is there going to be a meetup at the Ezra UC this year?
No, there's not going to be a meetup, but as usual, we will have a booth. So find the GPN booth somewhere in that massive exhibit hall and stop by and say hi and hang out and rest your feet for a bit.
And get swag. GPN swag now.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you.